About a half a billion dollars in payroll to people who live here. Who will then spend that money here and recycle that money here.
The 18-story hotel with 350 hotel rooms is intended to serve growing hotel demand near the L.A. Convention Center and Staples Center.
We can bring more conventions when we have more hotel rooms, and this will accomplish just that.
10 years ago, 10,000 people lived here. Today, 55,000. The year 2040, we expect 125,000 people to live in downtown L.A.
Indigo's interiors weave together elements from L.A.'s history, starting with the late 1800s through the 1920s, and incorporating the early days of the movie industry.
This is the most happening spot in California, and we'd argue that it's one of the most happening spots across the United States because we've got the energy and we've got the availability. And now we're demonstrating with projects like this that we can make things happen.
Hotel Indigo is located on Francisco Street, north of the L.A. Live Entertainment Center and south of the Financial District. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Switching gears now as we take a look back on L.A.'s history. Many ethnicities helped shape our city, but not without their own challenges. The African-American community played a large role and has a long story to tell of its time in L.A., one often filled with times of unrest and discrimination. A panel event at a South L.A. library made an attempt to tell part of that story. Anna Marcos has more.
Snipers who continued to shoot from rooftops.
See Watts riots, Daddy warned. Daddy warned. Terrible these riots where we burn our houses down. When we burn our houses down, ash is all that's left in our hearts.
You are listening to the personal stories of poets and authors on life and the Black experience, especially what that experience was like during the riots that erupted in Watts in 1965 and in South L.A. in 1992.
I'm a poet and artist first, so I'm not a scholar. I'm here to just, as I said, meditate, to think about my life. I was here in 92.
The panel at the Vernon Branch Library called Black Fire: Riot and Revolt in Los Angeles was also based partly on a 2001 book called Seeking El Dorado: African-Americans in California. Author Lynn Thompson tells the story of her dad migrating to California at a time of rampant discrimination.
Because they were going to California, the Golden State, maybe they didn't know many towns within its borders were sundowners. And there ain't no niggers allowed, was the policy.
And there was the time Thompson's father finally bought a house, only to have it taken away for construction of the Santa Monica Freeway in 1959.
Daddy, who only raised his voice when he knew he was right, said, "His offer is just another name for 40 acres in Mississippi." So we had to move.
There are men, and there are women with sacred places inside.
For author Peter Harris, who's written several books, life as an artist is also about helping art heal one's community.
Also, I'm interested in the theme of Black men and joy. And I'm driven by a question, what is a happy Black man?
From riots and unrest to joy may be a long journey, but for these authors, art and the written word provide a path and a way out. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Author Peter Harris has written The Black Man of Happiness and Bless the Ashes, while author Lynn Thompson has written Beg No Pardon. Over at Union Station, Metro's effort to make L.A. the transit capital of the world got on track. Rasha Goel has the latest on new rail cars that aim to enhance the passenger experience.
This signing between officials from Metro and China Railway Rolling Stock Corporation, also known as C-RRC, marks the start of a $178 million purchase of 64 rail cars for upgrading and improving the L.A. subway system.
Our current trains are now nearing the end of their useful life of approximately 25 years.
C-RRC is headquartered in Beijing and is the world's largest supplier of rail transit equipment.
The product has been supplied to 102 countries and regions.
Of the 64 rail cars, 30 of them will be used to replace existing trains on the red lines and the purple line. The remaining 34 will be used in the new purple line extension from Mid-Wilshire to Beverly Hills.
We anticipate nearly 50,000 weekday boardings once all seven new stations, subway stations, to Westwood are built. We also anticipate there will be nearly 80,000 new daily trips on the entire metro rail system as a result of the opening of the purple line extension.
Officials say the new rail cars will help improve the passenger experience.
These new trains will feature active line maps that show passengers where they are at that particular moment along the line. Each car will feature LED displays that will provide passenger travel information.
In addition, the contract will help create more local jobs.
We have approximately 10% of all the jobs that will be created will go and be targeted for disadvantaged workers. And that is very, very important to us.
With the first rail car being delivered by the spring of 2020 and the rest within the following year, Metro is moving ahead on the right track. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
This contract also adheres the federal government's Buy America provisions, requiring 60% of component parts to be American-made, creating more job opportunities locally. Also at Union Station, the iconic landmark was buzzing as a so-called pop-up barber shop offered haircuts and shaves, all for a good cause. Anna Marcos takes a look at how the event aims to stop world hunger with a flick of a razor.
The hot towel here is to open the pores up, soften the hairs, get it ready for the shave.
You're looking at a vintage, old-fashioned barber shop come to life in the middle of the iconic waiting room at Union Station. Of course, this is just a pop-up barber shop for one day. The event is for a good cause.
Yeah, we just come in and give shaves, haircuts, beard strims.
I have not seen my hair yet, so fingers crossed.
The barbers come from the Svelte Barber Shop, a local business, and haircuts and shaves are an easy $25 each. Funds raised at the one-day event go to Heifer International, a charity that works to stop poverty and world hunger.
I saw this online, and I thought it'd be a good time to get a haircut, help raise some money for a good charity.
Things are getting a little mummy-like here, but according to the barber, it's the only way to shave.
Do you know that you look like a mummy?
I can only imagine.
Feels good?
It feels great.
This is called a straight edge razor, or a cutthroat.
All this male pampering, cutthroats and all, has a historic origin at Union Station. There was once a real barber shop here when the station opened in 1939. It thrived in the '40s before closing.
I'd like to see a real barber shop come back. You can see we're repopulating the station with restaurants. It's really becoming much more of a destination for people. Well, Union Station is an architectural icon.
And so, this historic railroad pit stop just might one day go back to its heyday glory. Back when a genteel barber, a cut, a shave, and a train ticket, all went hand in hand. But for now, it's making a difference in stopping world hunger. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
For more information on the charity, visit heifer.org. One local all-boys Catholic high school in downtown L.A. is getting a touch of Hollywood as community members break ground for a new building. Anna Marcos has more on the new addition at Cathedral High School and what it means for the students' future.
This demolition at Cathedral High may be the star of the show right now, but soon the wrecking ball will make way for the real star, a new visual and performing arts theater center at the all-boys Catholic High School.
That's going to bring a new era of curriculum to this high school, who was doing performing arts out of a shack.
Over 70 years ago, our beloved annex was built to serve our students. So a lot of history is behind us.
My most memorable moments were the ones that I had with the brothers I made in my video production class, making Star Wars parody videos and anchoring for our morning broadcasts.
The newer, bigger, better art center will provide more space for creative arts, TV production, music, and acting performances, and includes a state-of-the-art theater.
Let's invest in young people who, if they get a shot at the arts, or math, or whatever it is, will have doors open to them, and they'll be able to reach for the stars and follow their dreams.
The school aims to create leaders in the community, but city officials say this new addition will make them leaders in arts and culture.
For us, it's super important to support the arts at a time when Donald Trump is divesting from arts and culture.
A little music showmanship from the students and a theatrical water blessing from the priest. And why not? They are welcoming an art center made for Hollywood. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
From all the bells and whistles of a new facility to an old-fashioned game of ball, some kids at Grand Park got a lesson in playing ball as the L.A. Dodgers showed them that you don't need a lot to enjoy the game. Gil Reyes has more.
No baseball field, no problem for these children making the most of what they have with help from the Dodgers organization and Major League Baseball.
To make sure the kids understand that it doesn't take 18 players, a Major League field, a scoreboard to play our game.
MLB's Play Ball Initiative shows kids they can still enjoy different parts of the game at the playground or in their front yards. That includes base running, fielding, and batting. 150 kids show us how in downtown's Grand Park. Among them, Benjamin Murillo and classmates from Solano Elementary School.
I learned baseball and how to be active.
And that's important, why?
So they don't just sit in the house all day.
Besides exercise, practicing also builds character.
They can set standards for themselves and figure out ways, how can I accomplish this goal? And feel how good it feels to work hard for something and accomplish something as well.
And that's a game anyone can play with or without a baseball field. In downtown's Grand Park, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Major League Baseball has hosted 250 Play Ball programs over the past year. The mayor announces his action plan for the city during his State of the City. One of L.A.'s oldest parks gets a new upgrade, and spring has sprung in the San Fernando Valley. All these stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti said the State of the City is undeniably strong, while also acknowledging the need to do more to help the city's most vulnerable communities. Speaking from the City Hall Council Chamber, Garcetti delivered his annual State of the City speech the same day he released his proposed 2017-2018 budget. He addressed two major financial priorities: a plan to increase spending on homeless initiatives to $178 million, up from last year's $138 million, and raise $100 million a year and leverage up to $300 million every year for affordable housing.
I know, my friends, we can do this together. And we can drive down the price of housing in every district, in every neighborhood of our city. And when we do, we will preserve the quality of life in our communities. We will reduce traffic because people are closer to their jobs and their families. We will help the people who revitalize neighborhoods not get kicked out of those neighborhoods.
Other key points: By the end of 2018, the city will deploy an earthquake warning system on every corner. The city will respond to all graffiti requests within a day. The proposed budget includes $17 million for Vision Zero, Garcetti's plan to reduce traffic deaths, and the city will continue to work toward the Department of Water and Power's goal of being coal-free by 2025. The Department of Wrecking Parks, along with Council District 1, celebrated the grand opening of a new synthetic sports field at MacArthur Park. Located in the Westlake District area of the city, MacArthur Park is one of the city's oldest parks. The new synthetic field was once a synthetic meadow designed for passive activities, but is now transformed into a certified sports field. Over in Council District 3, folks celebrated the season with a spring festival held at the Reseda Recreation Center. Plenty of food, rides, and activities kept kids and their parents entertained. As usual, the huge Ferris wheel was a hit with festival goers, and so were the funnel Well, next to the hipster bars of Silver Lake is a modest art space with big ambitions. Gil Reyes shows us what's happening inside the Neutra Institute Museum.
As much as she tried, artist Ava Perez could not get pregnant, so she turned her frustration into an art exhibit featuring eggs, Petri dishes, and all things biological about female fertility. The show, called Fertile Infertility, is one of the quirky programs you'll often find in this gallery, owned by renowned architect Dion Neutra, located on Glendale Boulevard in the music and arts community of Silver Lake.
This is uniquely located for what it is, and I think maybe one of the reasons why it's so popular.
It is the neighborhood museum you've probably never heard of unless you lived in this community. But Dion Neutra's Neutra Institute Museum has been staying busy, booking some 50 shows over the past three years, and we're told 2017 is pretty much booked solid. The property, across the street from the popular Red Lion Tavern, is on the National Registry of Historic Places. It was built in 1950 by Neutra and his dad, Richard Neutra, as a workspace. The elder Neutra, an icon of modernist architecture, who designed several world-famous homes on this very site. Today, son Dion is on a quest to expand the gallery into a satellite museum, an eastside extension for either the much larger Lakma or Broad Museum, miles away.
So if anybody listening knows Mr. Broad, I'm here. I would love to have a conversation. So there's lots of opportunities here. I need tenants to take spaces. We advertise on Craigslist, so check us out on Craigslist. You can see the conditions.
Possible new life for a hidden treasure in Silver Lake, and one of architect Dion Neutra's babies. In Silver Lake, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
For info on upcoming shows or renting a workspace, call the number on your screen at 310-795-4768. Well, check out the unique home of historian Charles Lummis. L.A.'s finest chefs and dishes take center stage during the L.A. Food Bowl and help clean up one of L.A.'s most eccentric neighborhoods. All this and this week's Things to Do. Step inside the humble kingdom of Charles F. Lummis, journalist, photographer, and historian. In 1884, the 26-year-old journalist walked over 2,000 miles from his home in Ohio to California to start a new job as city editor of the Los Angeles Times. After he settled into his new environment, he set out to build his dream home, El Elisa, known today as the Lummis House. Join a guided tour of the Lummis House with a docent and an L.A. historian. Highlights include a tower constructed from boulders, windows fused with photographs, old utility poles used as beams, and Lummis himself interred in the wall. Every door, table, and chair has a story to tell. The tour takes place Saturday, May 6, from 10 to 11 a.m. For more, visit atlasobscura.com. The Los Angeles Times announced the launch of Food Bowl, an annual, month-long festival celebrating the city's dynamic and influential food scene, taking place throughout the month of May. Centered in Los Angeles, the festival will bring together the best in local dining experiences while promoting social awareness about food waste and hunger. L.A.'s largest culinary event to date, Food Bowl, will include special programs with internationally renowned chefs during rare U.S. appearances. For more, visit lafoodbowl.com. Join the Las Felas Village Business Improvement District for a huge neighborhood cleanup. Volunteers are invited to pitch in on this beautification effort in Las Felas Village, a unique district known for its fiercely independent creative spirit, as well as its diverse businesses like familiar restaurants and services and vintage and collectible shops. Come on out and make certain this neighborhood gem that is neatly tucked between Griffith Park and Barnsdell Art Park maintains its quiet charm. The cleanup takes place on Sunday, May 7, from 9 to 12. For more, visit lasfelas.biz. And that's a look at some things to do. And before we go, the kids at Grand Park had so much fun playing with the Dodgers, we thought we'd share with you some more fun from the event. Take a look.
So I say D. I say D-O. D-O-D. D-O-D-G. D-O-D-G-E-R-S. Team, 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 O. I say O-M. O-M-A. O-M-A-L. O-M-A-L-L-E-Y. Oh, really? No, O'Malley. Sandy Koufax, oh, my drysdale morrowy wills, I love you so. And we defy, defy the J-I. J-I-N. J-I-N-T. J-I-N-T-S. Giants. Play ball! Orlando Sepeda is at bat with the bases jammed. Orlando Sepeda, with a wham, bam, he hit a grand slam in the very first inning.
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from All of Us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond. Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm a Nyangar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.[1350.03]
... items called special?
All right, why don't we start off with general public comment? Okay, Michelle Sutter, David McClave, Yvonne Michelle Autry, Christina Hagan, please come forward.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm actually rescinding my request for general comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Holly Varena-Awarty, please come forward if I called your name.
I am David Eugene McClave.
Yes.
Okay. Distinguished City Council members of L.A., distinguished fellow citizens, my name is David Eugene McClave. In 2015, I retired from Loyola High School as a history and language teacher. In my retirement, I've done many activities, particularly volunteering at the VA where I am a Vietnam War veteran, and at a Center for Disabled Adults in North Hollywood, ARC. But in the past six months, much of my time has been spent in arguing against a possible Trump presidency and resisting an actual Trump presidency.
You know, let me stop you for a minute. Are you here because you had hoped to speak on item four?
I was under the impression there were no public comments for item four, but I'd be pleased to-
What I want to do, Mr. Bloomingfield, we'll reopen. So what I want to do now is I want to just try to get general public comment.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna, for about five minutes, give or take, I'll reopen item four.
Thank you very much.
So if you could just be seated.
Yes.
So this is for general public comment. Come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Christina Martinez-Hagan. Thank you so much, honorable council members. Thank you for the opportunity to share my story today. I am a resident of the District 11. Mike Bonin is my council member. Thank you so much for letting me speak today. The reason why I'm here today is to let you know that Airbnb has saved my life. For almost 10 years ago, I lost my job. And due to the recession, since I have worked many, many different occupations, everything from licensed chauffeur to certified massage therapist, I, because of a work-related back injury, it left me unemployable. And in financial debt, including late mortgage payments, they were crushing me. Threatened with foreclosure, I discovered Airbnb.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could have, ma'am, please come forward and identify yourself. The next one.
Okay. Hi there, my name is Holly, and I want to thank you all for being here today and giving me this time. And I am a resident of, Councilmember Ruth, and I'm here on behalf of short-term vacation rentals because I had a psychotic break because I was given the wrong medication. And I had days where I could only get out of bed, take my meds, and make my coffee. But then taking meds and drinking coffee are non-negotiables. And I refuse to believe that was the best that my life could be. As part of that is finding work that I can do from my home so that on the days when I'm not feeling very well, I am in a place to be able to do my work. And I can do that with Airbnb and the short-term vacation rental. And frankly, we will lose our home if that ordinance goes through as is because our mortgage is due every month. It's not due every six months. And we just ask you to really consider leaving that open and giving us a chance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Voran, and Councilman Aufero, you're my councilman, thank you. I reside in Hollywood, work in Hollywood, volunteer in Hollywood. I love Hollywood. I consider myself an ambassador of Hollywood with Airbnb. And Airbnb allows me to stay in the home that I am, which is very humble, but in the heart of the City of Angels. The crowd that comes from Airbnb is global, but does not conflict with the hotel crowd because there are different income brackets, perhaps. The dream of the hotel and resort and spas is very well catered in Hollywood, and we need to have the small student travelers also travel. Some of them come to spec the living of Hollywood or Los Angeles at large through Airbnb to then move here. I think we empower the economy, and it empowers us to empower the economy to do Airbnb.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes.
Alan Worthy, I was here yesterday discussing this debacle with what happened to my dog while I was in the hospital. I'm back today to thank Mr. Coritz's office for picking up and taking up what Mr. Englander's office failed to do, namely Mr. Englander. How low can the bar possibly get in this country where such a thing could have happened, and then I'm promised by the city attorney's office they were going to rectify it, and then they reneged? Is there someone sitting over there representing Mike Fewer's office? The lady, hello? You're going to hear from the bar and hear from me through the bar. This is absolutely outrageous and third-world treatment. Mr. Bonin, you know me as an advocate for the homeless. You know who I am. I don't go anywhere without my two dogs. Okay? It's embarrassing for me. I do not like or enjoy identifying myself as a disabled person, but in the form of a light switch, I go down, okay? Like that.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could have the next, Ms. Autry, please? Then Maura Q. and Dan?
Yes, first, I'd like to request or advocate on, for the record, more time for a public comment. We used to have two to three minutes in Inglewood when current price was actually on the Inglewood City Council. First of all, I'd like to recommend that the City Council use its influence to discourage or prevent the use of drones, which have been authorized or implemented back east, and many of them have lethal weapon capacity. So I'm advocating, or I'm encouraging you to vote against that. We've also petitioned the City, the police commissioners. And I'd like to also, as I'd stated previously, speak on behalf of women because of the immigrants, especially Hispanic, Mexican men. Some men of all races have been attacking women, especially single black women. It's as if they are cannibalistic vampires in pursuit of single women for energy, for sexual pleasure, exploitation, kidnapping, sex predation, and human sex trafficking. Something has got to be done, their maintenance men and their gangs.
Thank you.
And so again, I'm grateful-
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Gus. Thank you, Ms. Autry. Thank you. And is there Maura, Maura Q.?
Councilmembers, hi. Daniel Gus, as you know, I write articles for City Watch and other outlets exposing corruption in City Hall. I have an LAPD press pass. I've received no due process or explanation for its revocation. You've violated my First and Fourteenth Amendment rights. You have violated my civil rights. You have discriminated against me, and I have been repeatedly threatened with arrest if I cross over the line that the pass allows. We are family now. We are family now. And I am going to sue the pants off the city for violating my civil rights, for selling me a press pass, and then only demanding it back 24 hours after I exposed the criminal activity of current price for bigamy, fraud, perjury, possible identity theft, and forgery. And then you tell me you want your press pass back? We are family. We're going to be in litigation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
This is Maura Q. I apologize, I registered for general comment, but I wanted to speak on item four.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You know, Mr. Bloomingfield, we, why don't we move to four? We'll do 10 minutes. A minute, one minute each, okay? All right, so why don't I, I'll let you start off.
And I remind us, this is not a partisan issue. This is not about Trump's proposed budget cuts to 50 million in CDBG money for the most vulnerable people. It's not about his threat to cut off hundreds of millions of dollars because he thinks we're a sanctuary city. It's not about his anti-choice, his anti-immigrant positions, his misogynistic words and deeds. It's not about any of that. It's not about his efforts to deny millions of Americans health care. It's not about any of his policies or actions that I and many of us here find completely odious. This is about conflict of interest. Aside from his alleged financial improprieties, there are key facts that should worry all Americans and should warrant intense investigation. A national security adviser who was paid a foreign, who was a paid foreign agent of Turkey and Russia. A campaign chairperson who was hired, a hired hand of corrupt governments such as Viktor Vanikovich in Ukraine. Multiple other former and current staffers with ties and friendships with murderous dictators. For example, the Secretary of State Tillerson having received the equivalent of the Presidential Medal of Freedom from Vladimir Putin. No one can tell me that if Secretary Clinton won, the House and Senate Republicans wouldn't be clamoring the gates to open countless investigations if they thought even one of these things were remotely true. But, but, but with Trump, this appears not to be the case. And DC Republicans seem to be so blinded by finally having control of all branches of the federal government, they have no interest in getting to the bottom of these deeply troubling and potentially criminal accusations. But this resolution is about the potential constitutional crisis. It's about pressuring Congress to ensure that Trump only uses his presidency to benefit the American people and not to- It's not about any of his policies or actions that I and many of us here find completely odious. This is about conflict of interest. Aside from his alleged financial improprieties, there are key facts that should worry all Americans and should warrant intense investigation. A national security adviser who was paid a foreign, who was a paid foreign agent of Turkey and Russia. A campaign chairperson who was hired, a hired hand of corrupt governments such as Viktor Vanikovich in Ukraine. Multiple other former and current staffers with ties and friendships with murderous dictators. For example, the Secretary of State Tillerson having received the equivalent of the Presidential Medal of Freedom from Vladimir Putin. No one can tell me that if Secretary Clinton won, that the House and Senate Republicans wouldn't be clamoring the gates to open countless investigations if they thought even one of these things were remotely true. But with Trump, this appears not to be the case. And D.C. Republicans seem to be so blinded by finally having control of all branches of the federal government, they have no interest in getting to the bottom of these deeply troubling and potentially criminal accusations. But this resolution is about the potential constitutional crisis. It's about pressuring Congress to ensure that Trump only uses his presidency to benefit the American people and not to simply continue his net worth. This is something that all Americans should want to get to the bottom of. Through this resolution, colleagues, we are asking Congress to look deep into Trump's international financial dealings to make sure that they are in line with the emoluments clause of the U.S. Constitution. Article 1, Section 9, Clause 8 clearly states that no person holding any office of profit or trust under them shall, without the consent of Congress, accept any present emollient office or title of any kind whatsoever from any king, prince, or foreign state. The term emoluments includes a broad range of financial benefits, including but not limited to monetary payments, purchase of goods, services, even fair market value, subsidies, tax breaks, extensions of credit, favorable or regulatory treatment. Constitutional scholars are raising the issue that if a foreign official or embassy hosts an event or stays at a hotel where the president's name is branded from the top of the building to the chocolate on the pillows, it may violate this clause of the Constitution. The Trump Organization currently has business ventures in nations around the world, including Saudi Arabia, the Philippines, India, Argentina, and Turkey. And because of his refusal to unveil his tax returns or really any documents that explain with whom and where he does business, there are many dealings that we may never know about. During the campaign, he said he put his business into a blind trust. Then he said he would leave the business to his children and not have anything to do with them because, quote, "he'd be too busy being president." Now, according to news outlets such as Forbes and Politico, his son Eric Trump is briefing the president quarterly on family business, neglecting all previous statements to separate them from the Trump Organization that he made in the past. It defies credulity that the president will offer no advice of consult of any kind when he is briefed about the health of the Trump Organization by his son. It's unbelievable. One specific and dangerous example of how Trump is currently mixing business and governing is in the Philippines. President Rodrigo Duarte of the Philippines has admitted to murdering people. He literally said, "It's okay to kill journalists." Quote, "Just because you're a journalist, you're not exempt from assassination if you're a son of a bitch. Most of those kills, to be frank, have done something. You won't be killed if you don't do anything wrong." And how has Trump chosen to interact with this leader? Did he voice concerns about human rights? No. Did he talk about the importance of a free press? No. Trump has praised him and invited Duarte to the White House for a formal visit. Now, that in itself may just be bad judgment, but I can't help but wonder if this might have something to do with the new $150 million Trump Tower that is about to open in Manila, in which Trump's company is reported to earn millions each year in licensing fees. And we need to know this. Another troubling example of how Trump and his family are mixing business and governing of our nation is a recent deal between Ivanka Trump and China. On April 6, Ivanka won provisional approval from the Chinese government for new trademarks, giving her the rights to sell more of her branded merchandise. That same night, she and her husband shared a steak dinner with President Xi of China at Mar-a-Lago. And in an interview with CBS, she claimed that her business would be doing even better if she hadn't moved to Washington and placed restrictions on her team to ensure that any growth is done with extreme caution. I doubt it when you look at the facts. According to the Boston Globe, the week of the summit, 3.4 tons of Ivanka Trump handbags, wallets, and blouses arrived in the U.S. from Hong Kong and Shanghai. The U.S. imports on her merchandise grew an estimated 40% in the first quarter of the year, according to Panjavi Incorporated, which maintains and analyzes the global shipping records. The facts don't lie. Ethics lawyers from both President Obama and Bush administrations continue to sound the alarm on this issue. They are just two of the many, many potential conflicts of interest that need to be investigated. Now, there are representatives in D.C. that are fighting hard to make sure these alleged improprieties aren't swept under the rug. I want to share my support and admiration for Congressman Adam Schiff for all that he's doing in the House Intelligence Committee. There are folks who are fighting to bring sunlight to this political situation. Even certain Republicans like Senator John McCain and Lindsey Graham have voiced concerns about these conflicts of interest. And now, with the federal budget and new attempts of a tax system overhaul on the horizon, we still have no clue where his financial dealings lie or what benefits him and his companies. If he is not going to come clean and show the American people that his hands are clean of potentially illegal foreign money and investments, then we must demand that Congress use their power to investigate the situation. With this resolution, the City of Los Angeles calls on our congressmembers and our senators for the good of the country to investigate Trump's international finances and make sure that he is actually working on behalf of the American people and not his own pocketbook. Colleagues, I ask for your I-vote on this important issue.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Now, I'm giving you time to speak. You're hurting yourself. Okay, so, Mr. Bonin, I'm going to call on the public first. Like I said, we reopen hearing for 10 minutes, one minute each. I want to call back. David, you still here? And Maura, because you were the first two. If you guys would come up and then behind you, if I can get, is it a...
So you know who I am, David Eugene McClave. As any good teacher knows, it's usually advisable to have a prop to drive home your point. Last week, I financed the publication in Washington, D.C. of this paid public service declaration of impeachment. It appeared in the Express. It appeared under the pen name Publius M., and I don't have time to explain that, but it goes back to the founding fathers and the Federalist Papers. The model, of course, is the Declaration of Independence. And I ask that the council be given copies of this declaration. It's basically modeled on the Declaration of Independence. There are 18 specific grievances for breaking away from British control. Publius provides eight reasons for establishing grounds to start impeachment proceedings while also mentioning the possibility of removing...
Thank you, David. So if I can now get Maura, then General Jeff, and then is there Sven? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and I'll try to keep this brief. We don't know the extent of the Trump campaign's collusion with Russian hackers. We do know the predictable result of Trumpian climate science denial is catastrophic mass extinction. In this context especially, the president's chainless violation of the United States Constitution is not a trifling affair. During his first month in office, President Trump made a commitment to officially recognize the Republic of China, but not Taiwan. The application to trademark his name in China was subsequently approved despite having been held up in court for more than a decade prior to his proclamation. As Senator Feinstein said, "If this isn't a violation of the emoluments clause, I don't know what is." And as noted in USA Today on May 4, 2017, hundreds of prominent psychiatrists and mental health professionals believe that Trump is clearly impeachable under the 25th Amendment. There's ample and daily evidence of his psychotic malignant narcissism. We must pass this resolution to call upon Congress to immediately investigate any and all violations of the emoluments clause and other high crimes and misdemeanors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get General Jeff, Sven Buncher, Michelle Sutter. Mr. Herman, please come forward. So if I called you, the clock is ticking. Please.
Thank you, Council President. I'm Michelle Sutter here for the West Valley Resistance. If we cannot come together to insist that the U.S. Constitution also applies to President Trump, and if by our inaction we affirm that flagrant and unapologetic disregard for America's founding document is to be tolerated, then we may as well put the Constitution in the shredder, or worse, watch as it shrivels to become a crusty artifact of the lost promise of America. We will need to bridge the gap that exists today between partisanship and patriotism in order to uphold the promise of our Constitution. Can that bridge find builders here in Los Angeles? And it looks as though it has, and I thank you for that. And I ask for the council's unanimous vote to advance this resolution today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. General Jeff, Herman Previn, Walsh. Yes, sir.
So now we know who the 45th president is, right? Now we know. But what did Blumenfield say about the 45th president? The SOB? There's no SOB. It's called treason when you attack the President of the United States. It's called treason when you attack our administrative officer and chief of command. It's called treason. Stop your shenanigans. Stop it. Pelosi, that bitch from San Francisco, made a comment about it. Yeah, now I got your attention, SOBs. Because it's my 45th president, it's your 45th president, and the election state, it was Trump. So if you want treason, get in line and go fight in Afghanistan if you're badass. Go fight in a war and serve this country and be a badass like my brother, the U.S. Army. Otherwise, shut the fuck up.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could, Mr. Walsh, then Mr. Previn, Ms. Autry.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org to the L.A. City Council and to every city council in the United States. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Do you agree? Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. 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 Am I clear? Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Dump Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. The whole world wants it, except for Mitchell Englander, the Republican on this council, and he disappeared. He's not here. He can go to hell. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Three seconds to go. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump. Impeach Trump. Dump Trump.
Okay, so if I could have Ms. Autry, Mr. Previn, Mr. Spindler, please come forward.
Well, I do believe that, at this point, most of our constitutional rights are under attack. Black people's constitutional rights that we gained during the '60s, women's rights to the liberation that we have, even speaking from a heterosexual point of view. And I'm not a member of the women's liberation, but I am at heart, I'm a free woman. But I am speaking on behalf of even the posturing that Trump has made again to prevent illegal immigrants that are attacking and exploiting black people. All of our resources are being given to the immigrants. Black people built this country. No money is being given to black people. I don't want a bullet to the head, a prison bed, a tent on Skid Row or San Pedro. So I'm not a racist. But Hillary Clinton never addressed these issues. We're being exploited and the extermination of black people. And I'm not anti-Semitic, but the wealthy people are using as a wedge the Hispanic people in the extermination, the persecution of black people that you want to put in the trash to exterminate. And the rest, you're commissioning your police to murder. So again, as a black woman, I'm tired of being harassed by these vampires and cannibals that enter my room.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, please. Ms. Autry, your time's expired. Mr. Spindler.
Go ahead, Mr. Puppet.
Yes. I will let you in on a secret. I voted for Trump as a puppet in eight states. Yes, like everybody else. He got in by voter fraud. Congratulations to voter fraud. Like many of you here also do the same thing, like Norrie. So where is Mitchell Englander, the racist councilman, Trump supporter?
Stay on the item.
Englander is not here.
I stay on the item, Mr. Spindler.
He's a supporter of Trump.
Stay on the item.
Trump. That's right. Joe Breyaly is also a supporter of Donald Trump. That's why he's a racist. So the emoluments clause? The emoluments clause doesn't apply on a chocolate on a pillow. So I say, fuck, 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 Englander. Fuck, 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 Englander.
All right, your time's expired. Okay, your time's expired. So Mr. Previn, Mr. General Jeff, Mr. Worthy, one minute on this item.
Yeah, I'll tell you exactly how Donald Trump got elected. It's the economy, stupid. Remember that old saying? And it was us, the Democrats, I'll quote Mary Baker Eddy, "awake and caught napping." When the big banks were allowed to take over our loans, foreclose on our houses, and take $750,000 in profit on a loan they never wrote, okay? And we got left out in the streets. That's how Donald Trump got elected. So I am pleading on each and every one of you, let's wake up and stay awake and be awake and attack the situation with the big banks. We need another mortgage settlement. The first one was a disaster. It was in the L.A. Times, coming up on three years ago this spring.
Stay on this item, Mr. Worthy, on this item.
Thank you.
Okay.
Impeach Trump.
Okay, so I'm closing the hearing on this item, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to rise and thank Mr. Blumenfeld for bringing this resolution before us today. And I want to thank him for the incredibly detailed and cogent prosecution of the case. If this gets before the House and the Senate, I think you should join the Senate as one of the prosecutors of the case. Because what Mr. Blumenfeld made very clear, abundantly clear, is that since 12:01 PM on January 20, this president has been committing high crimes and misdemeanors. What Mr. Blumenfeld made abundantly clear is that since January 20, this presidency has been illegitimate. And what Mr. Blumenfeld made abundantly clear is that this president has broken the law and this president must go. There is a great new book that I encourage everybody to read. Takes less than an hour. It's by the historian Timothy Snyder. It's called On Tyranny: 20 Lessons from the 20th Century. And what he talks about is that in nations around the world during the 20th century, the first thing that happens when a new regime comes in is that people teach themselves to voluntarily obey. And the fact that this violation of the Constitution is not the subject of congressional investigations, is not the lead story in the Washington Post every day, is not a topic of conversation everywhere, is an example of how we are teaching ourselves to obey. And what Professor Snyder points out is that we must resist, and we must protest, and we must rebel. And we must do it now while it is not illegal. Because he makes clear that if the 20th century teaches us anything, a democracy descends into fascism and totalitarianism within three years. Three years. So we must act now and defend the presidency and defend the Constitution and defend our democracy. Yesterday, I think we've all seen the photo of the rose garden. A rose garden of a billionaire surrounded by middle-aged white millionaires, thrilled and celebrating what they've done to take away health care. I look at this crowd today, in terms of race, in terms of age, in terms of gender, this could not be more opposite and could not be more reflective of the real America and the real L.A. So I urge an I-vote on Mr. Blumenfeld's incredible resolution today so that we can send a message to our representatives in Congress, my friend Ted Lieu, my friend Karen Bass, my friend Auntie Maxine, who represents my district, that if they stand up for our Constitution and our institutions, the Los Angeles City Council and the people of Los Angeles have their back. Thank you, Mr. Blumenfeld.
Mr. Sadiya. Mr. Sadiya. Mr. Sadiya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to also join my colleagues in commending the leadership of Bob Bloomingfield. I'm humbled by his eloquence, impressed by his preparation. I also want to applaud the audience, because nothing is more important than what you are doing. There is no other place for you to be as Americans today than in these chambers today, calling upon your local representatives to speak up on your behalf. I concur. Thank you. Our nation, in many respects, is in peril because we're not sure and we do not know, there is not a way for us to know whether or not public policy is being driven by law, the rule of law, by the best interests of our people, by the Constitution, or is public policy being determined by the financial interests of the presidency and his cronies? How are we to know? It is an ongoing and continuing wrong. It is an ongoing and continuing violation of the law that our president fails to reveal conflicts of interest, fails to reveal his tax returns, fails to be transparent on the most critical and central matters of the day. You are absolutely right. He does not let us know whether or not any decision he makes is influenced by his financial interests or the interests of his cronies or his class. And that is not democracy. This here today, your presence, your calling upon your elected leaders to act, is democracy. And so I applaud you. I call upon you to continue in this resistance. There is no other matter more important and no cause greater than the future of this nation, and it is being driven by your leadership. I thank you and I applaud you.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you all for... Thank you all for coming down. I now want to go to our multiple public comment section. If I could start off with maybe Mr. Previn. In fact, now I have Mr. Herman in front of me, so let's do Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, you have a total of three minutes. Two minutes for the items and one minute of general public comment. You have to speak on items one, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, an amending motion for item number 12 has been posted and circulated, and I understand that public comment as a courtesy will be reopened on that. So if the speaker, multiple item speakers, want to comment on item 12, I suggest they be allowed to.
Fine. Yes, Mr. Herman.
So now that I have the chair, Mr. Chair, in regards to those unconstitutional liens, in regards to them in my protests, I say fuck the lien. Now on item number five, regarding the relative removing of various properties, I agree. It's a good job, for once, you're removing those liens on the rent escrow. But now on item number nine in CD four, when it comes to traffic signals, are we safe? Are any one of you safe? No. That's right. Why? Because traffic signals do not operate in our city. They are not up to code of the ADA.
Mr. President, the speaker is off topic.
No signal, no beeping noises that work for the disabled. So disgraceful, and we want the Olympics? Say no. Then on item number nine, Felipe Fuentes, the chipmunk of CD seven? No, it's Wesson and Martinez, relative asserting the El Nino Pacoima family. Well, yeah, aren't we a family? That's what Daniel Gus said, a family, a source center in the covering outstanding water and power bills. Well, I'll tell you about water and power. Fuck you, for the record. Now I'd like to go on to my general public comment, sir. So why aren't you asking me to be quiet with the clapping? Why aren't you asking them to be quiet with the clapping? Why don't you tell them to keep the noise down? Don't make extra additional noise because you're a fucking racist, Herb Wesson. And that was the reason why I went upstairs to serve you. I serve you for the record. 176 pages for your discriminations towards an individual for standing here and speaking. The same way the sergeant of arms attacked Daniel Gus for pointing out the facts of the matter. Pay your mortgage. Current price, whose car is that in your yard? It belongs to S26. Now if it's not your car, it belongs to the public, return it to Sacramento. Stop fucking with people, Englander. Stop being a fucking racist. Heil Hitler to you, you FJB, you fucking Jewish bastard.
Okay, so now, Mr. Previn, if you could pull up Mr. Previn on my screen. Mr. Previn, you have items two, six, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and 12, I'm sorry.
No, sir, and seven and eight as well. You're not reading my list. Let's double-check what you got there. Okay, I'm not going to play that game with you, but I'll just start talking. Item number two is the Sierra Canyon Bond Measure, $455 million. This David Court is the trustee, who we are applauding for disclosing that he gave to Englander during this time. Because the trustees from Harvard Westlake did not disclose it, Munger, a bunch of them, Jaimon Chang, a whole bunch of people just never disclosed that they were connected to the school, and they're trying to shove a bridge across Coldwater over a public roadway against the objection of the neighbors in CD two. So we're doggedly watching that, we're upset, and we're concerned about it. Item five is the proposed waterfront BID. Now, BIDs are terrific, and this is where...
Mr. President, the speaker has not have a card on five.
That is, I signed up for it, man. You don't decide... You don't have to physically sign.
Just go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, I'm trying to speak on the item. Why would I not be able to speak on item five? It's on the section.
Mr. Previn, hold his time. Mr. Previn, you want to argue or just continue? I didn't stop you. Go ahead.
I'm going to continue speaking about it, which is... Now, my microphone's been turned off. It's a business... Anyway, let's be clear. $224,000 for a boundary study by LAPD at the number 68 budget memo. How about we have the bids cough up and cover that? Because it's about studying about where we do patrol. The way you do patrols, you send the cars out and you respond to calls. So that should be a good resolution to that one. Item number seven is the center group, Center Theater Group. We're having a little Grand Park, hooty, howdy-doing. I love that. I love theater.
Okay, now, Mr. Previn, you don't have a card on seven, so you can't speak on that one.
Well, that's in dispute, sir, because there's no reason...
No, no, Mr. Previn, you want... Give him his... Mr. Previn, you don't. Okay? So speak to the items I said. Eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and five. You don't have seven, Mr. Previn. So go ahead.
I'm wasting my time. Item number eight is traffic signals. For the last 15 seconds, I was trying to address the traffic signals. David Rue in CD four has come up with 179,000 from the Ventura Boulevard-Kowenga Corridor Plan. It's 179... I live in that area. I cross, you just increased parking at the Metro and Universal City. There's an area that needs a look. It's the intersection entrance onto the 101 freeway right off of Kowenga. It's dangerous. It's very dangerous. We don't need a bike lane, though I do appreciate it. We don't. And what we do note is that the budget memo number 11 looked at alleys and paving and potholes, and in CD seven, they only had 20 done, whereas in Bonin's district, they had almost 500. And in Coretta's district, they had almost 500. This is the abnegation of Mr. Felipe Fuentes, and you, sir, have not filled the potholes in that district as you promised you would. They have nothing going on over there in the pothole department. So I'm upset about that, I have to admit. Item number nine is H-SID. What's not to love about H-SID? The guy's sneaking around up in HHH. They need to provide the audio recordings, as we discussed, but this one, they are doing a nice thing, sir. They're coming up with $43,000 to cover the backwater bills for a not-for-profit in CD seven. So I do... Whereas I do appreciate that, I must tell you, the nose starts to twitch because not everybody has that program.
Okay, let's give him his general public comment minute now.
The general public comment, first of all, we want to look into the Center Group Theater Grand Park celebration. Mitchell Farrell has done a great job over there. And at budget memo number 74, he's requesting $250,000 for a ticketing program for the city theater. I propose that we get our treasured partners at Live Nation or Ticketmaster to provide that service complimentary to all the city theater, so that we can... We don't need to spend money bulking up on that kind of a thing. Well, we want to put it on the screen, into the productions and so on and so forth. So I would appreciate it if you would look at that. And also, if you could simply return, and this is going to get more, not less, vocal. He needs to return the Masuborsky LLC excessive contributions that the Ethics Commission made a finding, Mr. Mitchell O'Farrell. Okay, I don't want to argue with you. You're a nice guy, but do it, okay? And Mr. Krikorian, thank you for coming back. We have a budget meeting today at 1:00 PM. You have to give the public more than 60 seconds, and you can't do the old gag where if they come in one minute late, they miss public comment, and if they stay for four hours and 45 minutes, they still miss public comment. So I just don't know what to say. I feel that this body needs to do a slightly better job of being responsive to the public.
Thank you. Thank you. If I could get Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, you have items one, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. And he gets a total of three minutes.
How nice. Okay. All right, the puppet will defer to me. So item number one, CD seven, no liens. The puppet has talked extensively about this in public comment later, right?
Yeah, fuck the liens.
Now be nice. So no more liens in CD seven because CD seven is being ran by the chair, and you promised no more liens, at least until July 3rd, when the new council person from CD seven gets elected, which will be Kiro Torosian, will win the election in CD seven because the person running against him is?
Too fat and looks too much like Noddy, and we only need one Noddy.
Thank you very much. So item number two is something called the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, known as TEFRA. Another $55 million theft going to CD 12. CD 12, the Trump supporter, Mitchell Englander, gets $55 million, ironically from Trump, in CD 12 to build a project in Rinaldi Street. So again, thank you, President Trump, for the $55 million of tax equity and fiscal responsibility bonds. Without the president giving that money, which he could have revoked, you wouldn't be getting a $55 million grant for a project, yet you want to impeach him. So that shows how fucking stupid you people are. Then we get over to these other items. We spoke on that. Item five, which we're bunching, San Pedro Historic Waterfront, absolutely yes. Absolutely yes. This is Joe Buscaiano's best project. It's an excellent project. Yeah, I know it's somebody screaming in the back there.
Now you can get ready for your general public comment minute, which is approaching.
All right, so, yeah, so somebody is having a medical emergency in the back, for the record. That is probably somebody that's just been served with papers. Okay. So we have the property-based BID, which is what's going to happen in San Pedro under Buscaiano's leadership, which is actually something good. See, when somebody does something good like this, we don't complain. We don't go, "Oh, oh, 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 oh." See, I'm not one of those white guys. The puppet's not one of those puppets. When you do a good job, Joe Buscaiano's doing a good job on this, we support it. Now you get to item seven, REEP. Yes, good job. Get them off the program.
You're in your general public comment, Mr. Spindler.
Look, we're down to 16, and I'm still in general.
No, you had three minutes left total. You already spoke a minute on the president issue.
Yeah, plus one minute. So I get a minute in general.
No, 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 you already did.
Oh, okay, you're going to do that? Fuck you, Wesson, see you in federal court!
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walsh, you had one minute that you already spoke on item four, I believe it was. So now you have items one, you have items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11, and five. So you get two minutes, then one minute of general.
Okay, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number one, building and safety, you do a good job. Number six, rent escrow, you do a good job. Number seven, this concerns the Center Theater Group anniversary held in Grand Park, a few hundred dollars. That's okay. The number eight, this is specific traffic signals, all three. If you don't live in the valley, you don't get traffic signals. They go to Asian and white neighborhoods. Number nine, this is El Nino Pacoima family sourcing, covering outstanding water and power bills. Now we're paying people's water and power bills. The whole system is falling apart. And when it bursts in front of where the mayor lives, then they might spend some money on repair. And I'm not... I'm talking about Glenn Dake's apartment, not his official residence. Tree planting project along Ventura Boulevard, always trees in the white neighborhoods. Final maps, you do a good job on the maps. You can take the 35 seconds and you can erase them. Let's go to...
Give him his general public comment, please.
Yeah. Okay. We got here, Sadiya was in trouble. He was in trouble. We found out that his opponent was a racist. And for the first time in history, the LA Times reversed its decision to... for his opponent. This is a scumbag over there, a racist scumbag named Robert Green. He's a white boy, he's vicious, and he gets everything he wants by getting down on his padded knees and giving Devon Maharaj a blowjob. Devon Maharaj, incidentally, is the publisher and editor of the LA Times, and he is the worst editor in America. And he carries a foreign passport. He carries a Jamaican passport. Of course, he's a Jamaican, he's not any US person. And we have done an excellent job, and you have done an excellent job, and I'd like to go into my one minute of public comment.
Thank you. You know, this... You did your one minute, Mr. Walsh. So that closes our multi-section, our multiple general public comment section. On item five, I want to close a public comment on that, and we'll continue that item until May 10th. And at this point, let's now vote on item one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Let's now vote on items two, seven, nine, 10, and 11. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, now that is item 12. We're going to hear public comment on that, Mr. City Attorney. So I'm going to do that for 10 minutes. Did you want to make a statement?
I do. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. For the record, am I on the mic? When this matter was at the Plumb Committee, the committee noted that there was a typographical error in the draft ordinance, specifically the word "accept" should have been placed with the word "exceed." Correcting the error is a single-word, non-substantive change, since a relevant portion of the draft ordinance did not make sense as it was written, and it was clear from the context what word was intended. On council on Tuesday, the error was again noted before the item was continued. An amendment has been circulated and posted for the public that would make this technical correction. I understand that the item may be continued. I also understand that, Mr. President, because there are a number of members of the public here, that you may reopen public comment today. If the item is continued, then the amending motion and the rest of the item would be voted on and addressed at the... to the date to which it's continued. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have 10 minutes. So if I get the cards and set the clock, Alfred Freio, Kira Tassimi, Daniel Wright, Reverend Wilson. Alfred Frejo, Kira Tashimi, Daniel Wright, Reverend Wilson. Yes, sir.
Good morning, Mr. President, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to speak with you this morning. I am Alfred Frejo. I represent the applicant, Tommy Hotel, for this project. We have submitted additional correspondence for the record, and copies have been distributed to rebut the recent allegations. As you know, there's a number of appeals that were made for this project. Despite those appeals, and despite multiple correspondence from the appellate's councils, they have not presented any credible evidence under CEQA meriting further review of the project. We stand here before you to respectfully request that you deny the appeals and approve the project. By way of reference, the project itself is, has, in essence, been a request for a zone change, a use change for a project that was approved in 2008. I'd like to have additional time, if possible, to rebut the appellate's comments-
Not at this time, sir. So if I could have the next speaker, and then I'm looking for Otis Jackson, Akili. So please, you guys have, if I call you, you need to come up, because the clock is running. L.A. Farmer, Tori Bailey.
Go ahead, identify yourself.
Kira Tashima from Shepherd Mallin, representing the applicant. In addition to my colleague Alfred Frejo's comments, I'd like to add that the project will produce over ninety permanent, part-time, and full-time jobs, six hundred construction jobs. And although we do not have our supporters present, they have previously spoken before the city and provided support, including the organization's Hollywood Chamber, Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and the Hollywood Network Coalition. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to have the city attorney. Did you want to make a quick announcement?
Yes, just to be clear. We're not planning on having additional public comment when this item comes up again later, should it be continued, but the appellant's or anybody else are welcome to add additional items into the record in writing, and will be considered by the council members before it's voted on later.
Thank you. So please come forward.
Yes, good morning, Council. Reverend Wilson with Unite here. We welcome jobs. We definitely welcome jobs in hospitality industry, but we do not welcome Walmart jobs or Walmart developments. And what I mean by that is building a hotel that does not serve the community, that does not do workers any justice, because everyone in here has benefited from the labor or the hands of hospitality workers. And so inclusiveness and diversity should be included before it goes up, and we shouldn't have to be fighting over this. This is going to make our community better, but we don't need any more Walmart jobs or developments in this community, period. And as I said once before, jobs for good benefits. So before it goes up, you need to come clean and agree that you would do the right thing for the community and everybody else.
Thank you. And if I could also get Robert to get in line, next speaker, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Al Farmer. I'm a CD-13 constituent. So this, this, this Tommy Hotel project, it needs a full EIR. It's gone through an MND process, and it has been totally insufficient. Findings must be made by this body for the public welfare and good zoning practice, and this project does not have it. The hospitality and tourism industry in this city belongs to everyone, and we need it to reflect the diversity of this city, in good jobs, in hiring people who live here, and reflect our strong diversity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I represent the appellant. Am I going to be just given one minute to speak?
Yes.
Daniel Wright of the Silverstein Law Firm, on behalf of appellant Sunset Landmark Investments. Let me enter into the record an objection to being given only one minute for a landowner that owns substantial assets that would be constitutionally impacted by this project. Most of the members of this full council do not know anything about this project, but what this project reflects is a disturbing pattern of our planning department to allow in Hollywood, using a bogus interpretation of the zoning code to double the residential density of a project, and then increasing the FAR so that it can be possibly built. Let the record reflect that our experts have opined that an MND is required, and let me object again to the ludicrous one-minute for a land use appellate with-
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Otis Jackson. Honorable council members, Mr. President, I want to express opposition to the project. The project needs to have some economic opportunities for diverse members of the community and the city. The employment base has no intentions, is my understanding, that the employment base has no intentions of ensuring that folks with skills, qualified and competent, can get a living wage here in the community in employment. And so, in considering projects, it's good public policy to have the representation of the community at all times. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings, Council President, Councilmembers. I'm Tori Bailey, representing HTA, as an African-American female seeking employment. So as an option, I decided to go to the HTA Academy, which is Hospitality Training Academy, as a pilot student to see how it represents us as a community, and to seek further employment for our people within the community for livable wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Akili, and I'm from the Black Community Clergy and Labor Alliance, and we are here to oppose this provision now, and call for a community benefits agreement with an emphasis on diversity and inclusion. We have seen what happens when we have a community benefits agreement. We've seen the results, and there's a model and a pattern that's already exist. We would ask you to support a community benefits agreement before you approve this agreement. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Good morning, Council. My name is Roberto Masariagos. I rent in Hollywood, 1419 Northwestern Priestley Drive. I'm here to urge City Council, Mitchell Farrell especially, to, you know, to grant us the appeal for this project, right? Take it back and evaluate this project, because leaving there for over two years-
Hold this time. Sit down, Mr. Spindler, sit down. Let the man speak. Nobody gets behind you. Sit down. Come on. Sit down, Mr. Spindler. Show respect to the speaker. Sergeants.
So basically, the reason why we want the appeal is because we're using property that could be used for something that we need in Hollywood, which is residential houses. We have a big crisis with homeless. I used to coach. I had in Bernstein High School for over four years, and I was able to meet a lot of parents that, you know, that suffer from having to work two jobs, right, and not in Hollywood. So at this moment, I see that we're building a big hotel, but it's not promising anything to the community. So I urge you guys to please send it back and evaluate, and reach out to Lilo Armenia.
Thank you. So if I could have Mr. Gus and Ms. Autry? Mr. Gus, Ms. Autry?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're disrupting the meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Could I have that nine?
Yes, you can have your nine seconds back. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, nine seconds. Thank you, thank you so much. I'm President Wasson. What I'd like to say is that I think that there are enough dispensaries or licensed liquor dispensaries downtown contributing to any type of lewd or misbehavior. I think that there are enough, I think the city is already benefiting from the revenue generated from those licensed alcohol dispensaries, especially, today I'm going to focus on the attacks and the exploitation of women and disadvantaged single-
Mr. President, the Speaker's off topic.
Ms. Autry, are you, does this general public comment?
Alcohol dispensary for the alcohol, was this relative to that? Is this the item for the alcohol licensure? For the, it's for a business that's seeking authorization to sell alcohol downtown? Is that what this, this is-
Go ahead.
This is twelve?
Yeah.
I'm speaking generally to the influence and to the climate that's created, because there is so much alcohol available, and it contributes to any type of delinquent or illegal activity. But can I-
Go on for another twenty seconds.
Again, very, very specifically, the women, not just black women, are being exploited by black men, white men, Hispanic men. We're at a time right now where women are under attack. Just for the record, we are not the hotspots, the ladders for pleasure, exploitation, sex goddesses, especially black and petite women who have been abused in this misogynistic atmosphere or environment. And again, the alcohol encourages that mentality.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so on this item, we will close public hearing and continue it. Or did you want, Mr.? And that is the tenth. All right, so now we have item-
Mr. President, the city attorney requested that I announce that item twelve is continued to Wednesday, May 10th.
Good. So now, item six, is there Bonpuah Jason? I don't see him, Jason Bonpuah. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any other business? On item eight?
Kathy Deladoni, President of the Plan Review Board of the Ventura-Kowenga Specific Plan. Our board is supportive of the allocation of the one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand to DOT for three intersections. But we also, in our original motion, we also would like to have it included, that the funds may not be used for maintenance and repair, and that any excess funds remaining, that these excess funds be returned to the Ventura-Kowenga Boulevard Corridor Specific Plan Fund 523 for other improvements that can be done on Ventura Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's, Mr. Rue, sorry.
Mr. President, actually, as requested in speaking with the community, I would like to amend the motion to where the funds may not be able, may not be able to be used for maintenance and repair, and if there are any excess funds remaining, that the excess be returned to the Ventura-Kowenga Boulevard Corridor Specific Plan 523 fund.
Okay, so now, do I have Al and Kevin? Kelvin, come on up.
Mr. President, there should be a second for council members.
Now, wait. Did you sign up, sir, for items eight, or is this general public comment? Okay, general public comment has been closed. So now we go back to David's item, where we vote as amended. So let's, I'll second if he needs it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that brings us where?
That brings council to motions for posting and referral.
They're posted, they're referred, announcements, members? No announcements? Let's all rise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my right side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my right. Now, I'm looking, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask today that we adjourn in memory of Darren Fortune, who was a Lawa Airport aide and a special services supervisor at LAX. Darren was a member of special services at the airport for nearly thirty years, and many of us who've flown may have known him. For the last five years, he served as an airport aide supervising the special services unit in the Government Affairs Division. That's the unit that provides terminal area parking and transportation for dignitaries. His job allowed him to interact not only with Lawa employees, but also with various dignitaries as they fly in and out of the airport. Many VAPs, elected officials, cabinet folks, have had numerous interactions with Darren while flying in or out of the airport. Often, the DC or Sacramento delegations would see Darren twice a week, and he was on a first-time basis with many of them and their schedulers. He loved his role at LAX and always showed enthusiasm and professionalism. He started his career with the City of LA and Lawa on October 9, 1987, as an airport guide. He was later promoted to an airport guide two in 1999, and promoted to an airport aide in 2012. He's going to be very greatly missed by his family and friends at Lawa and throughout greater Los Angeles and California. He had a very strong impact on people, was known for his peaceful, warm, and beautiful personality. A memorial service was held April 29th at St. Agatha's Church in Los Angeles. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. So no more to the right or left, members. This meeting is adjourned.